Well, we're still on the end of it. Determining because it's something with the. This one, we just have to. From the. Bad.
Yeah.
Well, that. Yeah. If she could do this, though, but you're touched that to get. I'm.
Folks, we're getting ready to start here before we call a meeting to order. I'd like to offer my apologies for my departure for not being here on short notice at last month's meeting. And thank Mr. Watson for stepping in on short notice. I appreciate it. With that said, we will call to order the June 7 regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. And if we can have a roll call, please.
Yep, Jacobitz.
Here.
Love, here. Leatherby.
Here.
Johnson is now your Watson. Taylor.
Present.
Cotton.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
All commission members besides Johnson are present.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is consideration of the June 7 minutes. Commissioners, you have copy of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections?
With all due respect, I appreciate the fact that someone moved me to vice chairman on page six. Second paragraph, it said that vice chairman Taylor moved. I apologize to Commissioner Watson, but I'm just a commissioner, not vice chairman.
Okay.
Page six.
Oh, right here.
Yeah. Yeah.
And also the bottom of the first page, the motion says the motion carried unanimously when in fact it carried on a five to one vote.
Right.
Um, okay, and on the next page, case 2217, second sentence should probably have wish for clarification. He informed the planning commission that the city had ordered a demolition on the home that is located at 115 East Maple Avenue. And he was requesting to rezonate as opposed to this. Or was it the city requesting to rezonate? Nope, he was. Okay, there needs to be a he. Any other corrections or additions to the minutes from last month's meeting? If there are none, then we would entertain a motion for their approval as corrected.
So moved. Support.
Commissioner Love and Commissioner Taylor, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item, case number 2213, a planned unit development request at the Adrian Mall. We have heard this before. Is there someone here to represent that project? And sir, if you'd step forward and once again identify yourself for our minutes and.
Thank you. Dan Garnow, and I'm representing the Adrian Development Group, who's the current LLC ownership group of the mall property. I think, as you, Mike, already pointed out, this has been a, you know, a number of meetings and materials going back and forth. Hopefully you've got a chance to look at our package that was submitted by the collaborative, who is representing us with this development to this point. I guess what at this place, you tell me, would you like a short overview? I could have Alyssa come back up from the collaborative, do a brief sort of summary again of where we're at, or you can start with your questions.
Commissioners, let me ask first, Mr. Garnow. Yeah, have there been any substantive changes since we heard from you last?
Uh, no, I wouldn't say anything substantive.
I would just say that it's now.
If you'd step forward because otherwise the microphone won't take.
Sure. Alyssa O'Neil, the collaborative. I would just say that it's more of a formalized document. So the things we were talking about in the past meetings are now listed and specified, things like the building height and, you know, what the acceptable uses are for the property and what the development areas are. And that's just all in the document you guys have received.
Commissioners, would we like to hear a thumbnail presentation or are we content with having with what we've heard in the past? Commissioner Roberts is shaking her.
I am content.
Pardon?
I am content.
You're content? Okay.
Thanks.
You know, perhaps just as a preliminary comment, this is probably the most complicated planned unit development that this, that we've seen in probably 20 years, I would suggest. That if I think everyone is enthused about it, but it is complicated. The most complex one that we've seen. Since nothing has changed, commissioners, do you have any questions for either Mr. Garnow or Ms. O'Neil? Have you had the opportunity to review staff's comments?
Yes, and we do have a couple of points we'd like to engage to either get clarification or to, I mean, make sure we're all on the same page.
Please do so.
So the first thing is, we heard that loud and clear from the beginning that the concern was, you know, we don't want to just sell off outlots or one or two outlots and then leave the rest of the mall the way it is. And we've assured you all along that was not the intent. The intent was to go through a phased process where we could move along. You know, one or two parts of it may be dependent on certain steps happening. And we mentioned to you, our first intent was to at least procure the sale of a couple of the outlots, which I think you've acknowledged in the staff comments. So we have capital to begin working on the demolition and the reconstruction area. That seems to be reflected in the comments with the exception of one item that's maybe not as clear as it could be to us is the New Life Church spot, which does not involve any new construction, but would involve some renovation on the inside part of the existing mall. In other words, the firewall would be intended to be created so that that, I'll call it the new addition of what was the Elder Beerman storefront, can be separated off and New Life Church then can continue to do their own development project, you know, under the permitting process and construction process with the trades and your inspectors, et cetera, which would involve permitting and the regular process. So that, that split of that New Life Church parcel didn't seem to be incredibly clear in the staff notes. So I guess I would ask for some clarification on that.
I believe as you described it, it would be our intention.
Yeah, that, that was the intent. I guess what was not clear when staff was reviewing it was that it was going to be, that the ownership was going to change. You know, the intent was that as it relates to any of the existing buildings, obviously renovation of those is not only, you know, timely renovation of those not only desirable, but encouraged. And so that would be fine. What, what we were concerned about, and as Dan represented, is the sale of sort of greenfield lots off that like has happened with prior owners of this property without investing into the existing improvements on the property. And so it would be the intent of the way the the report and the resolution is written that the redevelopment of the Elder Beerman space for New Life Church could proceed either as a separate, the own parcel or, or not, as the case may be. So we could clarify that perhaps in your resolution, if you choose to adopt it tonight. But we, we understood that that was supposed to happen, that we just didn't understand that it was going to be sold off.
And I apologize if that wasn't completely clear. Obviously with it being sold gives the entity of New Life Church a lot greater flexibility with their own funds to put those monies into that section of the building without being concerned about, well, what happens with the rest of them all? If it's theirs, they own it. They'll procure their own financing. Of course, it'll be under, you know, the city's direction with the permitting and the construction and renovation process. We have the draft survey done, which will be part of that package when that comes for approval and legal description. There may need to be some tweaks to it, representing all the different easements and utilities that come in and out of that property. But we feel pretty confident we've got that well underway with using the local mannequin smith that have done the surveys on that property, at least for the last decade or two. So there doesn't seem to be anything missed in what we've been able to review with the title company and the surveyors. So that would be our intent to apply for the sale and split of that, that parcel per what is, I believe, shaded as section F, which would include some parking, one ingress coming off of Winter Street. And then the newer part of what was the Elder Beerman retail store. So.
And along the same lines, and I don't think, maybe it doesn't need clarification, but that because so much of this is in flux over the next, what? 18, 24, 36 months, 48 months?
Yes.
Is that we certainly want the ability to review progress on it and individual site plans as it, as it comes forward, as it goes.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, as long as we're on the same page with that.
Yep, that, that was all, I think, pretty good and well covered in your staff memo and resolution with the exception of, and I think, thanks Greg for clarifying. Maybe it wasn't completely clear here before too, that that was intended, that section F would have its own separate ownership. Although as still part of the PUD, recognizing all the ingress and egress, common parking, there would be shared easements for the rest of the PUD so that it wouldn't hamper the progress for the overall development.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Garnow or Ms. O'Neil?
Well, not necessarily a question, but this is the first time I've seen this. And I don't know why we didn't get this in advance. This is your development plan. The materials we have. Wasn't, wasn't in the one that Jeremy sent out yesterday?
No.
Well, I know you sent one out last week and you apologized that it was somewhat garbled. So I waited for the one you sent yesterday, and this wasn't in yesterday's. So everybody else got it, I guess. I'm sorry.
Very nice plan.
But I mean. The comments, the comments in our paperwork refer to a development area, A, B, C, D, and H. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the heck they all are, you know, because I didn't have this document. I'm, I'm sorry.
Other questions we need to, or comments or? Thank you, Mr. Oh.
I do, do have one more thing. I just want to make sure and clarify, there's been a lot of emphasis on the demolition portion. You wanted to see the progress on that. We're working with Tony and some of the other officials on pulling the permit, identifying how those utilities would be separated off of the part that's going to be demoed. I think what I want to make sure that you all realize, there may be some approaches to how we're going to seam the, the wall of where the demolition portion is going to come off the mall, where we may be wise to do some of the internal footers in construction of what's going to be the ex, the new exterior wall before the shell of that comes down, because that keeps our security, keeps the weather out of there. So some of that's going to be a little longer process probably than all of us might have wanted to see before you actually see that exterior shell come down. But rest, rest assured, you will all be aware and Tony will and the other officials of what's going on on the inside. It just may not look like a lot from the outside for a while.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is, Jeremiah, did we receive any written or phone comments on this project?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular planned unit development matter, mayor?
I would just request that since you, you just said that a lot of it's going to be happening internally, you're not going to see it externally. I probably get at least two emails a week about the mall, and then they're all like, you're cracking down on Blay, but you're not cracking down on the mall. And they always talk about it and they don't realize what's happening there. So maybe just as a suggestion, you know, maybe if there's some way you can do, you know, some big signage, like this is what's happening. This is what's coming, some, some render, some renderings that can like be visible to the public just so they understand. Yes. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this project? Folks, as I think you're aware, any action we take with the planned unit development is in the form, is like a rezoning and is in the form of a recommendation to the city commission. And so any final approval will go to them. With that said, is there a motion for action on this particular item? I would suggest a motion to adopt the resolution that staff has provided with the addition of the, the church condition.
Let's see those lots. So.
With the addition of the.
Number three would say only development areas, CNF may be sold.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay, item three, C and F. Thank you, Greg.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Christer Love with support by Commissioner Cotton. Commissioners, any discussion on the motion? There is none. A roll call, both, please.
Roberts.
Yes.
Watson.
For.
Leatherby.
Support.
Cotton.
Yes.
Taylor.
Support.
Jacobitz.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Pushed past unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you both. Look forward to seeing progress on this. I think.
Well. We've started. Yeah, we've started some of the demolition internally. I've got to get as fast as I can, officially down there. So there's a long process. As far as those two areas that are approved to be sold under the plan permitting, we have purchase agreements already in place. So that shouldn't take too long. Title work is already done. Surveys are.
And we submitted the surveys with the packet.
There's some utilities that have moved and smaller things are going to take them on to other.
Okay. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda, we have two discussion items on our agenda, and these are strictly for discussion. There is not, we don't intend to take any action on these this evening. The first one is a discussion of eliminating the warehouse district. And folks, I think you have staff comments on this along with maps and definitions of showing where the warehouse district currently is. Their suggestion is that this, the warehouse district be eliminated and be rezoned as industrial. Jeremiah, would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, sorry. So the packet's a little out of order. It is. In power on Friday, so it's a little screwed up. But if you go to page 24, there's the memo for this. I apologize for it being out of order. So the future land use plan calls for the elimination of the warehouse district. There's four current properties parcels that are there. I've given you a map for both. One is south of the, three are south of the fairgrounds, and one is a, actually a residential house that's on Logan Street. The plan calls for those to be industrial with the exception of 404 Dean Street, which is the corner of the three that are on, you know, south of the fairgrounds. Currently, right now, there is a dog grooming company that wants to go in there. That they may.
Wants to legitimately.
It may possibly be occupying the space. We're not sure. But this discussion was to discuss, the property is owned by the railroad some of it, and they have shown hesitance to rezonate. And so this discussion is, do we want to rezonate these two industrial as the future land use plan intends? And remove this warehouse district? Which at that point, if we did, we could hold a public hearing, then rezonate to the city commission, which then also the dog groomers would then come for a zoning exception permit with site plan for that location is, is one thing.
Because that use is permitted in the industrial.
It is permitted in the industrial, and I've given you the warehouse district.
No, BI one.
It, the future land use does show it as commercial, but it's, it's a budding industrial, so we could make it industrial. It calls. To make it industrial, it it calls for a corridor down there, but we could.
Right.
Do industrial, um, I've included the warehouse and wholesale ordinance along with the I one, I two and E one. Um, notable things are in the warehouse district, there are some um, things that are not in other districts that we would have to discuss moving. Namely, adult bookstores and massage parlors and things of that nature, so we would have to discuss where those would go. Hence the reason for the E one potentially, or the I two districts, um, which is why I left those in there, so we can discuss that. Because those do have to be accounted for within the zoning ordinance in some form or fashion.
We haven't, I mean, we have an E one and an I two.
Yes, yes, we do.
Right, so what Jeremy is saying is, if we eliminate the warehouse district altogether, which master plan contemplates. There will be those set of uses which, planning jargon we call sexually oriented businesses. Which aren't accounted for anywhere else, but what you do need to account for in your ordinance somewhere, and typically you try to account for them in a place that's. Out of the way, but that is, that has a legitimate chance of being developed i- if somebody really wanted to do it. And so the choice for that, if you. I think we felt like I two was the most likely of those, given the relative location of I two. Parcels within the city.
Um, so your recommendation would be that the the adult entertainment uses would go to I two?
Correct.
Is the recommendation, though, that all of the warehouse district become I two, or not necessarily?
So, yes, what, the way it would work is we would, as a tax amendment, we would eliminate warehouse district from zoning ordinance. We would rezone the parcels currently zoned warehouse to I one. And we would amend the I two district to allow for the SOB uses that are currently at warehouse. They don't want, they don't want to.
There's no incentive for them to make any change.
Yeah.
The current, so that. So my current dealings with the. I'm not sure what he is of the property, I assume. Renter, but he's trying to purchase it off the railroad, however, they have board meetings and. These things that are keeping him from purchasing it right away to initiate the rezoning to get that done with.
I would just say, we have two demolitions that we ordered a long time ago that are railroad properties, and the railroad has wanted to cooperate. In both of those, Good Times Bar, and there's another property on Michigan Street. The bureaucracy of the railroad has caused that to be drug out now for the better part of a year. And I think it's probably the same thing with respect to this person who I think has ground lease, and then is in turn running to a subtenant. Who is the the groomer, or or whatever that business is, uh, you know, the bureaucracy of. The railroad and getting formal approval from whatever body at the railroad is able to give that for a rezoning as such. That they, you know, while they want to comply, they they can't get the railroad to move, so. In these kind of situations where the master plan, you know, indicates the elimination of a district. It would be typical for the municipality to go ahead and implement those, that rezoning uh by its own initiative. As opposed to waiting for property owners to do it.
So for sake of justification, though, shouldn't four oh four then be commercial? As that's what the master plan is?
Well, that's what the master plan is, but like Jeremy says. Cause then the other. I fear a great deal of thought did not go into some of these designations within this particular area.
Right, but then the other problem I have is, we just justified not letting someone. Get a rezoning because of the master plan, even though that may have made more sense.
That is true.
We can always change the master.
Well, and I I agree with that, but I'm just saying.
I I would say the distinction here is that this is already zoned warehouse right now, it's not like it's zoned commercial now, and you're rezoning it to I one. You're eliminating the warehouse district and substituting it with the I one district, so although, yes, the master plan.
We all need to get on the same page, because you're, from what I'm hearing, you said we're going to rezone all things to I one.
That are currently zoned warehouse.
Okay, so four oh four Dean Street would be I one.
Correct.
Okay, because on your paper here, it says commercial.
Well, that's what the, that's what the master plan designation is. And that's what I'm trying to sort out.
Right.
In terms of, is it still the right thing?
It's the pretty thing.
It's a pretty thing, did you think?
Yeah. Yeah, but in the end, I mean, considering what we just had before us the last couple of months, it makes me hard. It's a harder decision to justify why that one property gets I one. Cause isn't the current property we discussed the last two months, isn't that already industrial, even though the master plan's commercial? And that was our justification, or at least my justification, of why. I didn't think that, yeah, the denial.
If if this make, but if this makes sense, and and if that's the sticking point, we can always preliminarily change the master plan.
I'd be more comfortable that way.
And which which is probably.
I know it drags it out.
Which is my best practice, anyway.
It is, and and I would suggest that that area along there probably needs them. Although we just did it, we needs another look, because I don't think a lot of thought was given to some of those commercial designations. Along there, which probably don't make a whole, may may not make a whole lot of sense.
Then you almost have to re.
Why are we opening Pandora's box again?
Yeah, I I will say there's a distinction with respect to the other matter, because that would have been a, you know, it would have been a spot zone. As requested.
Correct.
It would have been the only piece of industrial or marijuana overlay in that block. Now, the question was, therefore, should you rezone the whole block? I I think one of the reasons why we didn't feel like that was a correct thing to do was the master plan designation, but I don't think that was the only. Reason why, I I I also feel like the use of the, the uses that were prevalent in that area. Did not suggest that it was going, that those other parcels were going to end up being used as intended if that was resolved that way.
Commissioners, any additional discussion on this? Anybody in the audience that has, again, this is not a public hearing, this is or any action intended tonight, but just a a discussion. Any other thoughts or opinions?
So, just so I can click, so, so Dr. Love. You're beating around the bush about what, like, you are you referring to the Lettaway Tire?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Well, and like I said, if to to eliminate Dr. Love's objection, one way to do that would be to. Make amendment to, and we can probably do that retroactive, do it after fact, but make an amendment to the master plan. That would show this as industrial.
I I think it's, I mean, in the case of, I think it's a spot zone almost.
Well, except no, no.
I mean, across the street in the master plan, it's commercial, but in that area, no, I'm just talking about four oh four.
Yes, yes.
I mean, if.
Is is is.
That's that's the striking point. Instead of looking at the whole corridor.
Yeah, is four oh four where the doggy daycare is?
The the old service electric.
Okay.
You store it.
Currently non-permitted doggy daycare is is located there. Right, and so. I would like to think, I would like to think that this, that the action we're discussing relates to. Re responding to the master plan and our desire to eliminate the warehouse district as opposed to this particular.
Yes.
Yeah.
Currently illegal use of.
Is the fairgrounds I one? Cause our lovely color selection here makes it very hard to tell what's what.
Yes.
Yes, that is I want.
Folks, if if this is me looking at this, even though our master plan does not say that. Creating a spot zone there is silly, and abutting the I one to make all that block I one, what I would think is the right choice.
Yes.
It's pretty. I would agree.
Does that make sense, guys? That that all the I one?
Yeah.
None. None.
I mean, honestly, making that commercial on the corner would be spot, we would be.
Spotty.
Going against what we say all the time.
Exactly.
And I, and if we're going to pick lesser of two evils, not spot zoning.
Is the best.
Is the better than going by our master plan.
Yeah.
So, is our direction to staff, uh, to bring us back a proposal for rezoning. All the warehouse districts. And four oh four and and four thirty, four oh four and fourteen oh seven. To. I one. And change uses permitted that are currently, currently I would qualify as adult entertainment. Uh, from warehouse to I two. That make sense?
And eliminate the warehouse.
And eliminate the warehouse district, yes.
I would like a map that's specifically shows where I two is. We're going to be moving that kind of thing to those places.
Make sure it doesn't.
And be like, oh, there's a piece of that, there's just like this little corner piece that's sitting somewhere that nobody.
Well, or like the marijuana next to the county library.
Yeah, exactly.
The county library.
Okay, is that uh?
Yes.
Is that sufficient? I don't think that requires any formal action on our part, just a request for.
Yeah, well, we'll set up a hearing for you for.
And set up a public hearing.
May not be next time, but.
Okay.
Future meeting.
Okay, okay, very well. Okay.
But we'll get a, an I two map before that, right? Okay.
I two lit up on it, please.
Crosshatch or something.
All of the items on page twenty-nine, all of businesses on page twenty-nine, three A, one through nine, all of those businesses we're talking about.
Massage parlors and adult bookstores.
Taverns providing live for gender entertainment, where liquor is served. Et cetera, et cetera, so all of those, you're saying?
That's what I said. No, 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 no.
I think by using that term, we're not being very descriptive about all this.
Okay.
Would be numbers.
Although that's what the ordinance refers to, miss, establishments of a adult make. Son of.
Anyway, nonetheless, it's all one through nine businesses that would be.
Yes, yes. Well, and since and since they're currently, I mean, we need to permit them someplace, and if they're only currently committed in the warehouse district, we're going to eliminate the warehouse district. Yes, yes, yep.
So what I would say is that it actually number three, it would be three A, one through nine, plus B, one through six, and C one.
Exactly.
So you'd have A, B, and C along with their corresponding numbers.
B is, I mean, that section will be moved, but B. B is just definitions.
Mr. Chair, I have a just a suggestion that you or Greg or Jeremiah need to have a prepared statement, just in case it get. People will get heated about this if it gets out to the wrong crowd in this town, and we'll have a full room here, just to say. This is, we have to allow these somewhere, we're picking the. Uh, we need to have something just to.
Understood, understood.
You know, they may look like this, or the room may be full.
Brian, got it covered, yes, or at least, we'll try, yes, okay. And like I said, I as I questioned, I don't think that requires any formal action on our part, uh, it will at some point. Don, yes. Go. I two, we're moving those to to I two. General industrial.
If you're talking about all the warehouse uses.
Yes, and the and those uses that are, they will go to I two, yes.
Well. Yeah, let let me clarify, Mr. Chair, the the other uses that are in.
Warehouse.
Warehouse overlap with I one. So everything that's allowed in I one, everything that's allowed in warehouse pretty much is allowed in I one, other than that group of. Adult uses, which we're intending to move to I two.
So not looking at the map, are we concerned that we don't want some of our stuff in I two?
That's why I want to see a map. That's why you want to see a map, but yeah. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we did, I mean, staff did give some thought to that, and we looked at where E one is and where I one is and where I two is, and that was. That's our recommendation, but you'll have that opportunity.
Perhaps, Don, at the August meeting, we're we're still just, even though we may have it on the agenda for action, we may still be just reviewing it. Yeah. Okay, okay. Next item is yet another discussion item, sidewalk cafe distances for ADA requirements. Um, again, folks, I was not at the last meeting, but I understand that this was a discussion item then or it came up. Uh, and there was a request for staff to provide uh some data, which they have done. And from having read their commentary, it seems that uh, maybe maybe the issue, or and any one of you who are here. Feel free to jump in and correct me, but that the ADA requirements are for three foot of clearance, and our ordinance requires four feet of clearance. Discussion. Maybe, maybe someone can remind, can fill me in on what it is that prompted this in.
So we we got a complaint from a disabled individual who had indicated he was having trouble getting by. Um, cafes downtown, I don't know that he was specific as to the location. And so we, you know, being aware that uh, there was that distinction between what ADA would require. And what our ordinance requires, we brought that as a discussion item last time, should we consider reducing it to three feet? Given that that's the ADA requirement from the four feet that our ordinance currently requires, and I think that just to the discussion last time was. Well, let's get some data on what actually exists out there, and we can continue our discussion, and so Jeremy went out and. Measured the existing cafes, so that's in his memo.
And does Eric, apparently everyone meets the three foot? Yeah, please do.
So when I measured these, um, I kind of just obviously went through downtown, it's pretty simple. Um, Club one oh nine was the one that we originally got the complaint about, um, they were very cooperative and they moved at three feet. Um, we've been trying to work with the businesses on it, because if, as you can tell, quite a few of them can't meet the four foot, um, even the way they're set up, they're three foot. Um, so Club one oh nine with the way that they're set up with a small walkway kind of to their seating is three foot from the pole. Which meets ADA, Dempsey's is three foot from the pole, um, but they do have two feet that they're off of their building. Um, and I believe in their original drawing, they were up against their building, so it actually should be farther back, but technically they are meeting the three foot as it is. And Vets is meeting the four foot, Buzz is almost five foot, uh, Hooligans is three foot from both the tree box and the pole. Um, they've kept it that way since new management has been there, she has been very gracious, working with me and has kept it moved. Thankfully, um, Rice and Barley, three foot from the tree box, four from the pole, there's no ADA issues there. Um, the only thing that I saw is potentially on the tree boxes is, I think we discussed rubber matting potentially. And maybe that's something to discuss if business owners need to, could put that in, but then that would need to go through parks. To look at that, to approve it for the trees and things like that, um, but as it is, most of them. All of them can meet the three foot ADA, for sure, that's for sure, the four foot, though, quite a few of them are not going to be able to meet that.
So when you say they are, so Hooligans, thank you, three feet from tree box. Do you mean like the actual very corner or?
It would be the corner, so the actual, actual corner, not, so it would be anywhere that the wheelchair would have to. Be obstructed by something, so if they're going to dip down, I measured farther from that.
Right.
To get an ADA reading, so.
So if if we put grates in the tree boxes that are. So if if we put grates in the tree boxes that are would be of concern, then they would probably meet our four foot.
They would, but my concern with that is that they're slightly bumped up tree boxes. So if you put those in there, they're still kind of they're they're not even with the sidewalk everywhere. So, you know, even with those, you're still kind of rocky terrain a little bit. I mean, it's it's not horrible, but not all of them are even.
If if everyone is at least meeting ADA. I'm not quite sure. It it, the complaint we had, they weren't meeting ADA, but they've subsequently come into compliance with ADA.
Yeah, when they, when the complaint came through, I believe they were about two and a half feet, which then I spoke to them and ever since then, it's it's been moved. They do smile at me when I wait, when I measure it every week. They know the deal now. But yes, it is ADA compliance since I've gotten that complaint.
Okay.
Our ordinance says four feet from any obstruction.
In.
In violation.
Is there any interest in changing our ordinance to be consistent with the ADA?
Yes.
Or are we better off to leave it four and then we can say to someone, you know what, it's supposed to be four, but this is the best you can do.
And I think.
I don't like.
My interest would be is if we change it, instead of putting a numerical value, we just put set to ADA standard.
Right.
And then if the ADA ever changes, it's automatically changed.
Good idea.
And this doesn't have to be revisited every season.
Was it originally put at four feet before, because we felt that that was more generous and probably more aware of the necessities for people who are kind of in need of of extra room? I mean, why was it four feet?
As I recall, that was because it was less than five feet, which was what previously, so.
I think the, I think the initial before I even got here, because that was one of the first ones I did was set to six. So I think we dropped it down to four feet and now obviously that's still not working. So, but three seems to be the magic number so far.
I I like Commissioner Love's recommendation to just simply make reference to the ADA.
Right, and for all future restaurants that open and then have an outdoor seating area. It's it's right there for, they know exactly what to do, yeah.
Is there also a way we can recommend for grates on the tree boxes?
I'm sorry?
I, is there a way we can recommend grates on it? I just think that that one makes it look so much better. Because we don't even put ground cover down. And it it would just, yeah, and so now, and then they're a hazard. Because if if they aren't even, then you twist your ankle and I just. I know we can't do anything about it, but.
I mean, are we, we're not talking about every tree box, right? Because most tree boxes.
I prefer every tree box, but at least limiting it to the ones that sidewalk cafes are, and then it would actually give them more room as well. Because then you can go from the tree, the round part of the thing instead of.
Yeah, everywhere else is plenty of sidewalk.
Yeah, I just.
Even with the double. True. There, I know what you're saying.
Shall we ask staff to draft a change to the ordinance to make it to say something along the lines of compliant with ADA requirements? And pass on to.
Appropriate departments and boards.
Departments relative to tree boxes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good with that, guys? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Um. I imagine we will have to, we'll we'll have to have a public hearing on the ordinance change and refer that to the city commission as well.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. It's it'll be, if we do them together, it'll be at the pages that'll save on advertising.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening?
But I do, um, back to Commissioner Taylor's point, I'm sorry.
Oh. Brett, go ahead. It's okay. Yeah. Here we go.
Brett Cotton, ten fifteen East Hunt Street. I did read through the packet and I did want to point out that I did see an omission in the memorandum about the distances. I think tree boxes without trees should be included in those distances as well. Also, I wanted to point out that the city has one hundred and thirty one employees. That does bring it above the fifty employee threshold under title two of the American with Disability Act. That act actually requires that the packet contain an an opinion from the ADA coordinator who is designated at city hall. Any city that has more than fifty employees is required to have an ADA coordinator. The four foot margin that has been prescribed in downtown, it's considered extra generous. And so what happens when you are extra generous in certain areas of the city and not other areas of the city? It is actually discriminatory. So what happens is when the sidewalk size is four feet instead of the standard three feet, it's discriminatory unless the sidewalk in the entire city is considered four feet. For people that live either on the east side or the west side or not downtown, they're suffered under a three foot ordinance versus a four foot ordinance in the downtown area. Also, under title two, the ADA puts a lot of liability on the city. Title two is actually all the requirements that the city must comply with when it comes to the ADA requirements. So the fact that somebody had filed a complaint, a disabled person, there's actually a federal mandate for grievance procedures when it comes to disabled people filing claims with the city. As far as I can tell, the city of Adrian does not have an ADA coordinator, which any discussion about ADA changes to rules or deviating from the ADA requirements does require an opinion from an ADA coordinator since the city is over the fifty person threshold. So it doesn't have to be a new person. It could be an existing employee who is just cross trained, but that opinion is required to be for any discussion on ADA stuff. So the fact that the disabled person, which I do not know who that is, don't don't know anything about it. It was brought up that a disabled person had filed a complaint. But the fact that the disabled person didn't have a prescribed grievance process at the city, that person could actually file a grievance with the Department of Justice for not having a grievance process at the city. So when you deal with the ADA, you don't get to put the gas pedal on one side and not the other side. So if you're gonna offer a wider handicap accessibility sidewalk in one area of the city, you have to do it for the entire city. So every sidewalk would be required to be four feet. So also, if you are gonna be extra generous to one form of disability, you have to be extra generous with all forms of disability, which means you could actually be considered discriminating by being extra generous by offering a wider sidewalk to one disabled person.
Or suggestion that we simply change it to say it's consistent that it meet ADA standards.
Right. My recommendation to the city is to only require what is prescribed in the ADA and nothing more and nothing less.
That's what we just did.
Yep.
Okay.
I didn't hear any legal opinions behind it and I also didn't hear the opinion from the ADA coordinator, which is required. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other business? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.